He's tired of the bus, huh? He's tired of the buses.
I don't know. They was on the highway.
It'll be slowed down by yard.
Yeah.
Oh, that is starting to...
That is horrible.
A couple more, I guess.
Did you get in your front of your shop?
No, but they're all around us. But just getting from my place in Kilo Plaza and back today was like dodging cars. Because people aren't looking at...
Yeah.
They're going down the road, all of a sudden something sinks in front of you or whatever. Because they...
Is this a reception shirt?
We're having our TV, but it is 5:00 o'clock, so...
So, we will begin?
The TV's on.
You want to start?
Yes, we'll start.
Doesn't look like it's on.
Well, the blue light's on. Okay. It wasn't working, not what happened yet.
Well, the first item on the agenda is the St. Genevieve Community Access TV. That was actually our contractual amount was in a budget you already reviewed. But the board asked that we use this time to give him an opportunity to make an alternative presentation and request. So Gary White is the president of the board, chairman, whatever. And he has great effort to get here today. So we're gonna open the meeting and give Gary the floor to describe what it is that they would like you to consider.
You got the floor, Gary?
Okay. I don't know that most of you here have been down to the TV station, actually made a tour through there. How many have? I don't know. You've all been there and been interviewed and talked, see what we've done down there. Okay? What I did was brief this. I gave you pictures. For those who didn't remember all that, gave you pictures of what our station looks like inside. Okay? And this is the budget that we had, projected budget for 2018, which includes the contract, like Martin said, is 23.5. Okay? But also I had an agreement plus up to 35% of the total fees collected.
If you know, the 23.5 is in that, is over that 35%?
No. It says, "And," if you read the contract, it says, "and 35% up to."
Okay.
But anyway, we've never asked for it. This year, we're gonna ask for a little more, what we're getting. Reason being that the cost of this operation is a lot more because of the equipment that we're having to replace. If you look on page 2, it will tell you basically what we're looking for for items, for computer and why we need them. Let me explain this also. We have personnel. We have one person, and now two. But one person is Don Pritchard, which is our television station director. And we have another one, Charles Lurie, he's our IT director. I noticed at the last meeting, you all were talking about how much are you guys paying in that payroll to who and what? Don has always been paid around 15,000 to almost 16,000 a year. Now, our budget was 23.5. That didn't leave us much to get equipment and pay for contracts with different facilities that will keep us on the air, like the modern communications, Lexus, Nexus. And when we have our computers break down, and you can see somewhere in the alphabet, at least four years old, they're starting to break down. So that's why we are putting a list, give you an item list, request of what we're needing to work on this coming year. Now, we've been, in lieu of all of this, we've been writing contracts, agreements with the grants, CDR, CDC. Now, thing is, with that, it's always been a rule that we'll ask for, maybe, which we did, 2016, of 26.5 for grants, equipment. They will not allow us to pay for personnel. You can't get a grant for personnel, I think you all know that. You can only get equipment. So they asked us back then for around $26,500. Thing is, they only gave us half. And that's the way they've been doing it. So we have to wait, usually, we normally wait every other year so we don't hit them up every year for any more grants or donations. So 2008, we asked for 15.5. We got 7,500. We pretty well used that for our EAS system that we've got. And I'm pleased to say that it's in operation. Now, EAS is an emergency system service. Whenever there is a weather alert of any sort, it will be tell us prompt on the screen or run across the bottom, scroll. And then now it's hooked up. We finally got it hooked up yesterday. So you will see it. And you'll also see we're working with the police, sheriff's department, and we will be setting up any kind of emergencies, road traffic or something. They can send it to us and you will see it, scrolled across, if there's any roadblocks of any sort. We'll have that. That's all being set up now. That wasn't our 2018 budget when we applied for the grants. So that's what we're doing, and that's what we've done. We're just, we're getting that process. Okay? Have any questions about that, the EAS system? Okay? As you can tell, the HP computer systems, most of those computers are four years old, and we're having a problem with heat downstairs. We don't have air conditioning. What air conditioning we have is what we may have to put in there. So we voted to go ahead and find a portable air conditioning unit in the control room to help keep the temperature of that control room down. You have a lot of equipment in there, and they generate, a lot of, you know, they generate a lot of heat. And when it gets heat, then they start breaking down, going off the air. And that was one of the major things that we decided to do, by the cheapest way, too. Our wireless lava leer units, do you all know what a lava leer is? Okay? Well, we got one there. No?
Yeah.
And Buck, and you do?
John.
Okay. Well, some of you don't, and what that is, is TV stations are now are going to put a small mic, attach it, clip it to your collar, so they will get better sound reception, and there will be no noise from the outside, the background. That's what it's for. And so when we do interviews, just like what Paul does there, he's got the mic, but that mic will also collect sounds from around. And when you start viewing that, it's hard to separate that background sound.
Like when we all start digging through this and hear all those papers rolling?
Exactly. That's what you'll hear. That's exactly what you'll hear.
And that chair squeaking?
Yep.
Yep.
Or somebody going, "Cough." Yeah. It's actually like a one-on-one interview. So that's what we're looking for. I'm not saying that we're going to get it, you know, we would really like to have it, it really gets us back in the operation that we should be. What equipment we have is in good shape, except they're getting older and older. And the system nowadays that most TV stations are using the HD, high definition. Our equipment we had in the past are standard. So that means, what that simply means is you're, when you're on TV, you see that TV, that station, and they're fuzzy, a little blurry. That's what high definition is does, corrects that. High-capacity data storage. We were really blessed with that thing burning out the other day, so we had it in our book to go ahead and do something about it if we could. So what we're doing, trying to get the cheapest way, we're going to what they call the Nexus And we pay that, we pay about, like, a little over $1,000 a year for that, to have that system, the Nexus system. But the NAS system is expensive, very expensive. And that's where we transfer our files that we video into that NAS system. So what records that we have for the past 10, 20 years is all gone. It's lost. So we're looking at how we can recover that. And of course, the cost is gonna be up there, but that's in our equipment policy. Okay? Any questions so far?
I have a question.
Sure.
This, you know, I see this contract that the city has with the TV board, your funds, do they, are you, where do your funds come from other than, I mean, does the county participate in this? Is any other entities?
No. TV subscribers pay for this. Those fees that they pay, the average citizen around here that subscribe to this TV for our channel, they pay an average of about $8.85 a month, or $106.50 a year. That money was dedicated to the TV, use of TV.
Yeah. Well, I was just wondering.
Right. And so we said, hey, okay, that's okay, we'll stay, keep with the 23.9. But you all have collected this last year over $44,000.
Is the TV, um...
Is it broadcast over the air at all, or is it just available through cable?
It's broadcast through cable and satellite. And it's also, we have an internet system now, that you can see almost the same thing on the internet as you do with a cable TV.
I have a question, if I may, and it's not really directed at you, but he was talking about the air conditioning thing. We are potentially gonna do some repairs around here, remodeling. I wonder if there's a way to add a duct to what we have here to blow some cool air down there. I don't know who would have the answer for what.
Our proposal includes new HVAC seats, so it would be tied to our thermostat unless we could figure out a way to split that, but...
Well, they have ways where they can do that, but I mean, even if it was just something to go into the room where the equipment was...
Or if we could utilize our old HVAC for them.
Yeah, maybe. You know, I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there for what it's worth, you know, my point, what's looking into.
Gary, we've been talking about air conditioning down there for as long as I've been here.
Yes, we have.
And I know we took an old heater out of down there.
Right.
And took a lot of the heat away.
Right. We never did get any heat, only from upstairs is where we got it. You took it out, but we don't have any heat down there, that's fiction.
I mean, there's surely vents that, this gets heated, there's floor ducts there that the heat comes up. Surely there's some vents down below that that heat that downstairs.
I don't really have a problem in the winter.
Right.
Yeah.
I thought we'd rest it, but I guess not.
Yeah. Well, we get enough heat in the winter, just like what Martin said.
The problem isn't in the total space, it's just in the control room.
So how do you control that now? You have a window unit?
No, we can't put a window in there yet.
We don't have anything right now.
We don't have anything, we haven't had anything. We were talking about putting a unit in the wall where the control room is to blow on the equipment, but then you gotta have a duct that goes out and takes that water, that cooling water, from that air conditioner. So what, and that gets pretty costly. So we thought the best way to do for right now, and the most inexpensive way of doing it, is to get a temporary...
One of those mobile units?
Mobile, yeah.
Portable units, yeah.
Yeah. And put it there and blow it on their equipment. And, you know, I think if we're getting a quote on it...
Are you renting that, or are you thinking about buying it?
We're in the process of buying it.
Okay. Well, that's why I said if we're gonna remodel, maybe, maybe somehow we can blow some cold air down there. I don't know. It's worth checking into. If you got the guys here and they're redoing it, it might not, then again, it might be more complicated than that, because you're on a separate floor, I don't know.
Well, it would be better if we blow it in that control room.
Right.
The rest of the rooms, they're gonna be cooled, temperatures gonna take care of that.
Because you're blowing a great deal of light in it, that stays pretty good.
Exactly. But that control room...
Sure, you're generating heat with all that electronics.
Exactly. And see, we're not supposed to get any more than, most of the equipment that we get is no more than 85 degrees. If you get one degree above that, then your equipment starts going, closing up, blocking up.
Well, these phones will shut off. You leave one of those in your car, a day like this, it's...
That's right.
Yeah.
So that's what we have decided to do. We had a meeting Tuesday on that, and we went ahead. It's not gonna cost us any more than, for that unit, we got the cheapest way, go about $350.
No, that's not...
And that's not bad compared to what quotes we thought we were gonna get, 1,500, 2,000.
On this, these, the items list here on the second page, where are you getting quotes for these prices for this kind of stuff? Like a 20-terabyte hard drive, 3,500 seems pretty high for a 20-terabyte hard drive.
Well, yes, but you have to take, what we're gonna do is to take that NAS system out of that computer, and we checked to see how much it would cost to recover what we lost in that unit, like a hard drive. You take a hard drive out, you wanna check and see how much it would cost. Well, the manufacturer is called Seagate. We have no idea how much it's gonna cost, and they won't tell us until we give them our credit card, all our information. And then after they get it, they will tell us, well, we think it's gonna be so-and-so to try to recover it.
A 20-terabyte hard drive, you can get for around $800. So I don't know what the recovery of data on other things cost is. But I don't know, that just, that number jumped out at me. I'm a little bit of a computer nerd, and so I know...
I looked at the HP above that, and I didn't find any HP with that XPS 8900. Dell makes an XPS 8900, is that a typo or...
No, we've had, we've had success with that. It's at least four years old and they're working. So we keep with the vendor that is supplying us with some quality products. Of course, we're going to look at other places that offer that, but you pay for what you get when you get into the computer industry. And you should know that, when it works or not. If you're a computer nerd, you would know that.
Yeah, but I think he's saying that the manufacturer of the...
I was wondering if that was a typo.
The manufacturer of the XPS 8900 is Dell and not HP. It's a different company.
And that's fine. It may be used for the type error or something like that.
But the price was dead on, 1,500 dollars a piece. My main question is, and I've asked this before and never really got an answer, does the radio station that plays on 990 make any kind of payment to the TV station for that airtime?
The station, the 990?
Right.
It's all combined. We pay for 990 channel and 991.
Does the radio station pay to be on it?
No.
Meaning if there was a competing radio station interested in being on there, because they're selling, they sell their advertising based on, hey, this is played on TV. So they're making money off being on that channel, but they're not paying you guys anything to have that broadcast?
No. And we brought that up several meetings ago about that. And that comes up with Donzy. He does not want to work with us on advertising.
Would we approach any other, like J.98 or anybody else?
No.
But if that's an attractive way to sell ads on their station, you know, if they're making money off of it, then they have an interest in being on there. I think that's something we could look at to raise more funds, but...
We're willing to do that, there's no problem with that.
I mean, right now, we're playing that station on there for nothing, and they're seeing the benefit of it and...
Well, the thing is, what we got into that was they, you're talking about personnel. Pritchard is the manager.
Right. And I understand that, but...
And so he's volunteering some of that for us, just like some of the football games and stuff like that. We do that, and they don't charge us for that. And the same problem we have with the schools. They've decided to go their own way, and that is a problem. And I think Smith knows that, he was part of that back then, trying to get kids, train them and everything else. And that didn't work out, did it? And we can only do so much with these organizations. And they wanna go themselves, they wanna go that they think they got a better deal Facebook. I'm a little bit perturbed with that, because they don't try to work with us, and we try to work with them.
Well, we are broadcasting stuff.
Yes.
From St. Jen.
That's through YouTube. It's not through the school. They put it on YouTube.
The school video?
Yeah. They put it on YouTube, and we go to YouTube to get it.
Well, we broadcast it on our channel.
Right. We try to get it at the same time that they're broadcasting.
Yeah. And that's attractive to people who are subscribers, you know, do that.
Right. They wanna see that.
Yeah. Yeah.
So anyway, it totals up, it comes down, we're asking from 23.5, we jumped it up there to 39 a year, flat. No 35% of franchise fee. When it goes up, it goes up. Guys, looked at your books, it's on the report. From 2012 to 2018, on our 23.5, and we started 15 to 23.5, we got $50,625. You collected franchise fees of $246,000. You made almost $100,000 off of us. And we're sitting here struggling. None of our board members get paid for any of this. It's all free. And we also take our money out of that and pay for some of the equipment that we can't afford to get.
The money the city makes comes from cable television expenses.
Yes, it does.
To pay because of statutory obligations, a franchise fee.
Right.
Now into the state, they used to pay it directly to the city, which is then distributed to the city. The same way Citizens Electric pays the utility tax, or Missouri Natural Gas pays the utility tax. Then it's the city's commitment to take some of that and make it available for the local television stations. But it's not a requirement of the state. You don't have any obligation to distribute that franchise fee to anybody.
Right. They do that because what's gonna happen is that you have no TV, you have no subscribers. That just comes right down to it.
Well, the argument in favor of is that people subscribe to cable partly in order to get this program.
Right. That's for sure.
So if we would take the money that we have excess and give to them, what does that do to everything else?
Well, see, your money that you get from them, you throw it in your general fund. So it goes anywhere. Okay?
But if we, if we take it out of that and divert it towards you, it's gotta come out of somebody else. I mean, it's, it's being used in the general fund for other things. So if it's taken out of the general fund and sent towards the TV station, then it has to come out of somebody else's to go there, you know? It's not, I don't think there's stacks of cash laying around not being used.
Right. Not that I'm aware of.
Well, yeah, you're definitely gonna use it up.
Now, that's it. If I'm looking at the contract, and this is last year's, the current contract, it looks to me like it does say, "and 35% of..."
It says that, we're gonna give them $23,000 of any receipts from the city receives, paid by Charter Communications. And then it says, "and at least 35% of the actual TV utility tax receipts." Those are the same things, and there are no two different sources of revenue.
Right.
So that 23.5 comes out of the actual TV tax receipts.
It's worded weird for me.
It is worded weird.
It's been that way for like three, four years.
Somebody wrote it that way the first time, and that's the way.
Right, it's been that way.
Because to me, it reads that they get 23.5 guaranteed and 35% of whatever is collected.
Right.
Which would be a lot of money.
Which would be, which would be like right what they're asking.
Exactly. You're taking about...
Well, okay. I think it's...
Do you disagree? Is it...
Well, I, I, I think the 23.5 is the, is the tax receipt.
Then it should say, "or."
So then if you're gonna get 35% of the total, then the total would be whatever is above 23.5. The 35% of the total receipts that is above 23.5, they should get by this contract.
Right.
Right. And what is that figure?
Well, it's, 23.5 is more than 35%.
Well, no. Can I...
Of what we receive.
Can I see it for a second?
Yeah.
23.5 couldn't be right, because you don't know what you're gonna take in, John?
It says, "In exchange for the successful operation of the St. Genevieve Community Access Television System, the city will pay to the board the first $23,500 of any receipts the city receives from video service provider fees paid by Charter Communications, and at least 35% of the actual cable TV utility tax receipts from Charter Communications or other state authorized cable provider in the city."
Is it 35% on top of 23.5?
That's how it sounds.
It says, "and."
It reads to me, it's 35% on top of, like, you're guaranteed this, and then we'll give you on top of that 35% of, that's the way it reads to me. And I'm...
Same here.
Whatever you wanna interpret. Well, I'm no lawyer, and I'm not, you know, but...
You play one on television.
But to me, it reads, it reads that they're supposed to get a guaranteed 23.5 plus 35% of whatever is collected.
Certainly the way it sounds.
That's the way it sounds, and that's the way it was.
I mean, if it said, "or," 23.5 or 35%.
Or not to exceed.
Right.
Right.
But to me, I don't...
An "and" would be, an "and."
Is this something we need to have the attorney look at?
It's sad whether or not you think this is a reasonable request, or whether or not you wanna honor it.
Yeah.
Yeah. It reads, it reads to me that way, and I, I mean, maybe I'm interpreting it wrong, but that's the way it reads to me. I'm not convinced that the, the pricing is this high.
Oh, still it's low for a bit. I mean, people just...
I think the argument, the argument that our receipts, for reasons we can't explain, have gone up above the year when we agreed on the 23.5, I think it's a strong argument that there's, there's room there. I mean, there's more money coming in than we had anticipated when we signed this agreement.
And we did not ask for that 35% until we're right at the bottom. And we did not ask for that thirty-five percent until we're right at the bottom of the barrel trying to exist with what we got.
If the contract had read, though, "And thirty-five percent," why weren't you asking for thirty-five percent? I would have been. If that's the difference. If I thought that's what the contract said.
We're needing stuff now. We're kind of scrutinizing things a little more closely, and we're thinking, well, hell, we should get more money anyway, you know? That's kind of where it all started. We were content in other years. Boy, in two thousand fourteen, as a matter of fact, we got seventy-five percent of that. What was it? It was thirty-one thousand one hundred and fifty-six dollars, and we got twenty-three five, and that's seventy-five percent.
How long has the contract, that contract been as it is right now?
Two thousand fourteen, wasn't it?
Like, that wording of the contract has been that way?
That contract.
The contract predated my involvement with the city.
Right.
Right.
The only thing we've really changed over the years is the amount.
Is the amount, yeah. But that had to have been in two thousand fourteen, because that's where it showed up.
You guys don't want to look at what happened before when we first started twenty years ago, up two thousand twelve. You guys collected almost one million dollars off us for those franchise fees.
As I say, you say off of you. The argument, you're making the argument, the only reason people watch cable television is to watch the community access.
That's right.
Well, I don't know that that's right.
Well, I don't think that's the case. I think you're, it's part of it, but there's a lot more on the TV than... So, and I get the point and understand everybody's saying here, and...
What, could I ask you, what is the projection for end of the fiscal year as far as the receipts here?
We've collected everything that we're going to collect. They just made their final payment.
Oh, okay.
So it's the...
Well, what did you get here for the year two thousand eighteen? You gave me a figure. I was understanding that they still owe you.
No, they do not.
So we're good at forty-four thousand? Or is there any more?
We, no, that's it. Forty-four thousand one eighty-eight is what we collected, and that's it for the year.
Okay. Martin, do we get, do we get that money whether or not we have a local access TV station or not?
You get that money based on the number of people who subscribe to cable television.
Who subscribe to cable television, and...
If local access TV were to go away, with fewer people subscribe, in which case that would go down.
But you still get, I mean, you still get the tax money from the state, whether or not there's a local cable access channel.
Yes, yeah, based on subscribers.
The number of subscribers, right.
Right.
Well, you made it clear a while ago that the electric and the gas pay a franchise fee.
They do.
Yeah, and that's similar.
It's a utility tax. It's not called a franchise fee. It's the same, same concept.
Well, they, I know what you're saying, but the contract goes on and says that they are giving us the place free. Free of water, sewer, and utilities.
Your renters, you're not paying any rent downstairs.
Right.
You're not paying any water, sewer bill, you don't have that. You're not paying electric bill. You don't have to get electric. The city's providing those services to the board.
Right, and the room. And when you stop that, you stop by, and you see what the city's paying, gas and electric, and try to figure out what our portion would be. Say if you had, you've got a hundred thousand dollars in your fees, and your cost, and your cost for the building operating is a hundred thousand dollars. Top half, you split this building in half, that's fifty percent. And then, if you take the area of the TV station, that's another fifty percent, because the police pay for that. They have their own separate utilities. So ours would be twenty-five percent at the most of what the utility fees would be.
Well, I don't think anybody's asking you to pay.
No, no, absolutely. That's not a, that's, I don't even know how that, that was just in the contract. I just read it was in the, I'm not, we're not trying to get money from your, or fight.
I'm just...
I think, I think...
I'm all for living up to the contract. It's just we got to decide what the contract says.
Well, I mean, we got the contract.
Right. But there seems to be some disagreement as to what that section means about the money.
And I, and I, there's...
And we're, I mean, we're talking about a tiny percentage of an overall budget with fifteen thousand dollars, but it does have to come from somewhere.
Right. Well, and I think there's no question. I don't think there's a question that they provide a very good service to this community.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I don't want to see it gone. I want to see it prosper. So, and expenses go up. So it's up to the board, you know, we, the way I see it, the way I read that, it's "and the thirty." And having asked for, when was the last time you had an increase from the city?
Since two thousand twelve.
Okay, two thousand twelve, okay.
Now, the equipment that is bought, who owns that? The city?
We only buy the cameras.
Right. You buy the cameras.
So let's say we approve this request, and they go out and buy these computers, the storage unit, all that stuff. That's their property that we're buying for them?
Well, you're granting, you're giving them a grant for operations.
Okay, so we wouldn't be able to use a portion of the capital funds for that because it's not our capital, right?
No, you couldn't, you could not. I mean, we could own the computers, I mean, and lease them to them for a dollar a year if something you wanted to.
Well, I'm just trying to think of another possibility.
It's kind of just kind of how you slice the pie.
Because it's a capital improvement for them, not for us.
Pardon me?
It, it, so they own their equipment.
We have, we would have to own whatever we buy out of the capital.
All right.
Now, when we buy the equipment, we can't sell it in our contract. We can't sell unless we get a bid on it, and it has to be approved by us and also approved by you all.
And it has to be sold to a not-for-profit organization.
Yes. So we're limited as to what we can do with that equipment. Yeah, I'm pleased with the team we've got, and I call, consider them a team. We have our own idiosyncrasies about what we think, but when push comes to shove, we're there as a group. And this thirty-nine thousand, we all voted on that in our meeting Tuesday. And that's what we were asking for as a group, not just me or anybody else. That's us.
And these items may come in less, because you would have to put them out for bid.
If they do, we're going to, this is estimated bid. Now, just like that air conditioning unit, we were thinking alternatives. We got down to three hundred and twenty-five, the best way we could do to pay for it and get it resolved. You know, and we've done that with every type of equipment that we purchase. We get more than one bid.
How many wireless lovelier units are you looking at?
Four. And that's a good price. I'm sure it's gone up more.
You know, we're talking about setting a budget here for, it's going to be implemented in September, and it's going to be expended in the next fiscal year. And would be reflected when we change our contract, unless you wanted to amend the contract before then. So right now, you're questioning about whether or not you want to set a budget amount for now.
Right.
Implementation of that has to wait until October, and arguably, you wait until February.
Yeah, we won't get paid until sometime in February, and our budget, your budget is from...
And when it comes time to approve the contract, I mean, you probably, you would honor the decision you made for the budget, but you really don't have to. I mean, you can re-discuss it at the time, but I think this is the time to clear the air.
Yeah, we should.
What would the board like to do?
Well, I'd like to just get it.
I agree.
I would too, but I also, it means a lot to me. Where is it coming from? That's my big question.
It's going to reduce our...
It's going to reduce...
Surplus.
Our surplus.
At the end of next year, about fifteen thousand dollars, unless the receipts for the subscribers go up again.
The other thing that you may consider is that if it goes down, then, this is a yearly contract with you all. So we redo the budget every year. So if your agreement, your finance fees goes down, then ours...
The next renewal, we need to get rid of that weird language and just agree on it.
And that's, that's easier for us.
Well, I...
Just take a vote.
Yeah, just a percentage.
Well, we don't have to take a vote, but I don't want anybody, nod your head if you have a consensus on this. Sue will put it in the budget. Your vote will be when you adopt the budget.
Okay.
Sounds good.
We're going to put it in the budget with the projected surplus.
Okay, and then decide. Well, we don't, yeah, I appreciate this, but I know you've got to think about it more. I would like for you all to come down and look at our station again and just renew your knowledge of what we're doing down there. We had an open house last year. It was very successful.
A little side conversation. Need to wait till they're all down.
They would add two what we already have.
That's here we carry our... We'll do that when we do the monologue. You're going to delay buying the air conditioner unit, because we've got the, the remodeling thing's going to happen pretty soon here.
So you want us to delay it?
Yeah, hold off on that, see if we can't get it included in the, have you got bids out?
Yeah, we've got the bids out that we're going to get as soon as possible.
You're talking about the AC thing?
We want to.
You know, and three hundred bucks, I'm sure, you're not going to get ductwork run down here for three hundred bucks.
No.
So, I mean, that's my opinion. So what do you think, Jimmy? You been in destruction?
That's good.
We've contacted you and Marzuko and all of them. It's unbelievable.
Yeah, it's going to be a thousand.
But I was saying, Gary, maybe we can do something extra on the budget to fix it permanently.
Yeah, that would be great, but...
And that's kind of what I'm getting. In the meantime...
We can get this right. Yeah, our board's already approved to do that, so we can get that equipment from collapsing, turning up.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good presentation, Gary. Good point.
If you guys have any questions out, feel free to come down.
Now, we're going to thank the board. He's, I don't think, thank them for this.
Well, yeah.
Well, we do, as the TV board, we want to thank you all for doing that for us, because it's great relief it is.
It is.
To maintain our level of service at this time.
Say, thanks again.
Now, we checked several other stations. I have about our size. You wouldn't believe how much their budget is.
Oh, yeah.
It's a hundred and fifteen to two hundred thousand a year.
Projected surplus.
And they don't have what we've got. I don't think the school has it either. What is your budget?
The budget for the school?
Yeah.
Like, for the whole school?
No. For the TV?
I don't know. I'm the band director.
Okay.
That's Nancy Toons.
I can tell you how much the budget for the band is. I don't think it's comparable to them.
No, I don't believe so.
That's true.
Yeah. General teacher.
Hey, what are you doing, dude?
What?
Oh, thanks. All right, Bill. Thank you. Thanks for coming, you folks. You too.
Thanks for having me. I tried calling you back today.
We have our board members here. A lot of our board members sitting in the back to show you where we're from.
She had to do more, the way the first lady... She had two more people running shop on right there in Longmont. And you guys had some bite there the other day, didn't you? She has to...
Excuse me, I had a small stroke last night, so that's why I'm a little bit limited on... Hopping around.
Here, you need this?
Yeah.
There you go. Thanks for coming under conditions, Gary.
That's okay. I wouldn't change it for a world.
Yeah, we got other board members here. Phil Tucker, Sue, Gabe. Anybody else back there? Oh, Brian's back there also. Are you missing anybody? I don't think I'm getting it.
Joey's back.
Yes, thank you.
Hello, Mr. Bamm, how are you?
I'm well. I'm well, thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm glad you're going to tell me how horrible I am, because I wouldn't know otherwise.
Actually, I don't believe that.
Uh, Joe, French, uh, what is, uh, what?
My face is grease.
Twelve thirteen, twelve thirteen and thirty, I think.
Right.
Is there a look at the police budget and the K-9 budget?
You got, K-9's got their own budget?
We have a, an account set up that we deposit any donated funds into and then just use it as operating expenses. Uh, twelve thirteen and thirty, I believe.
Yes.
Yeah. See if you can help get them out.
There you have them.
Thank you, guys, for setting a special meeting for this. I didn't realize how long it would, how long it would take, but our budget is similar. It's a little harder to read with, with the budget amendments that we have to do. When we purchase a new car or new cars for auditing purposes, we have to show that entire purchase on that line item, which is eight zero four five. But essentially, I think I'm about fifteen thousand dollars above what I was asking last year, which includes the purchase of two additional cars. I believe everybody's been on the board long enough now. We've, we've tried implementing and have implemented a vehicle replacement plan where we replace two vehicles a year. At some point in time, we got away with, got away from it for a while, but at some point in time, and I believe it'll be the next two years, then that, that amount will stay fairly steady as far as carrying that over every year, because two cars will come off as two cars are coming on, and leases will, will make sense. Right now, we've got three active leases, which includes seven, seven vehicles. So this would be a fourth municipal lease, which will increase that by almost seventeen thousand dollars. But with some of the other things that rolled off, it raised it about fifteen thousand dollars. So the other thing that...
Eight zero four five, so?
Eight zero four five, yes. So we did not budget a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars last year. So the actual, the actual amount that I'm asking for, the seventy-five two twenty-four, will include the four active leases that I would, the additional active lease that I would anticipate entering into, should this budget get approved, that would be the line amount, or the amount that'll come out of that line item. Again, for next year's auditing purposes, it will show an additional seventy-five thousand dollars, because we have to show the purchase of the vehicles at one time for auditing purposes. But the actual amount that will be coming out of the budget annually will be that seventy-five thousand dollars, seventy-five two twenty-four. Another item that I don't know is on yours, but I made mention of it in my staff report last week, is six six zero two, the uniform and protective clothing. That is a line item that we are purchasing the new ballistic vests for, for those that are out of, out of date or the new officers, and that amount will be reimbursed by our, by our insurance. But it is an increase over, over what you guys have, I believe, on your budget at sixty-three seventy-five. But again, that entire amount will be reimbursed by our insurance. And everything else, I believe, is, is pretty well standard operating. If you guys have any specific questions, I'd be more than happy to answer what I could. You know, some things have gone up a little bit to cover internet costs and whatnot. And some things have gone down, you know, were purchases that we made last year that, that we're not repurchasing this year, like the copy machine, which works fantastically. Thank you, guys. And I think everything's going pretty well. We're, we're still anticipating coming in under budget again this year. And, and I mean, I think everything's going swimmingly. So if you guys have any questions, again, I'd be happy to answer them.
On your MDT air card, sixty-seven oh two, how often does that bid out? Or is that a two-year contract on it? What's the deal with that?
Yeah, that is a state bid contract price that they offer us. We have shopped those around every, every few... We have shopped those around every, every few years. We're limited here on what cell service we can get. Sprint works out really well, and that's, that's the air card that we've gone with for the continuous coverage on that, on the air cards.
So that's for your...
MDT's, the in-car computers.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
No, that's okay. That's okay. No, if you have a question, no, I apologize. If I, if I don't clarify, definitely ask me.
Oh, will they, uh, terminal?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Like Scamard's?
Uh, they're, no.
No?
They're laptops.
Okay.
What's a mule?
It is the Missouri Uniform Law Enforcement System. It's a, it's basically our access to DOR records and any warrant. It's, it's a state-run system. When you, when we run a plate or run a person, they're the repository for any wanted, wanted persons or vehicles or, and again, DOR access to ensure they're valid when they're supposed to be, or invalid when they're not supposed to be.
Now, I learned something earlier this, like last month, that, you know, you used to think you could run a, a check on people whenever you felt like you needed to. That's changed.
Yeah, we used to, we used to be able to run backgrounds for different personnel, you know, city personnel or whatever. Now it's limited to, to police personnel. There's, the, the same agency offers background checks, but they have to pay individually for, for those.
And is that a privacy law thing, or what, what is it?
Uh, I don't know if it's what the regulatory agency...
Point there is, now they found a source of revenue they didn't previously have.
Okay, that, that explains, that explains the whole thing.
And it cuts down on misuse, too.
Yeah, we're, we're limited on, on what we can run criminals on, which is good, and, you know, we have to maintain records on all that and, and disseminate. You know, if we do have to disseminate that, we have to log it, so.
When I was in code enforcement, in charge of code enforcement in another jurisdiction, we would always run a check before inspectors would go out, because you never knew.
Yeah, you know what they're walking into.
Yeah, you know what you're walking into, and I guess now if you wanna do that, you gotta hitty up.
Where's your radio?
Radio, as far as...
Yeah.
Dispatching?
Yeah.
Is under professional services. It's seven zero five zero.
Oh, yeah.
Since you brought that up, is there any talk of going digital, and is that gonna be an additional cost to, with the new nine one one system they got, is that gonna be digital, or are they still gonna support your radios and all that?
We have slowly implemented digital radios. We don't have every car outfitted with that right now. They, they have worked well with us as far as any, any changes that they've made. You know, they got away from their T one line and went to a, to a microwave system to eliminate any outage as far as, you know, with the communication lines. We do have some MOSWIN radios. I don't know that they are gonna have a budget to go digital anytime soon. I know Jeffco has gone digital. I believe the Highway Patrol has gone digital, but it's gonna be extremely expensive to get this county and St. Francis County digital. If they do that, I'm sure St. Francis County, with their sales tax, would have the money to do that. I don't know that St. Genevieve would do that. If, if they are requiring us to go digital, which I've not heard that as far as any serious talk coming up, then yes, we would be responsible for, for our equipment, for, for getting digital equipment here. But the actual infrastructure would be a major undertaking to, to get that up and, up and running.
Yeah, you're talking not just police, you're talking the whole county and bar.
Now, there is a Highway Patrol, again, the MOSWIN initiative. There are agencies that operate off of that MOSWIN network, and they, they do have some towers in the county, but, I mean, it would not, it would not be broad enough to cover like our handhelds or anything. So we may be able to hit that on a mobile, but I, I don't believe we could hit the towers that are currently in place with our, with our handhelds.
Wouldn't that be the whole county, though? If there was something mandated?
Yes, yes. If, if St. Francis County went all digital and required that we go all digital, our options would be find another dispatching agency or, or go digital, which, you know, there, there has been, you know, with a lot of the grant proposals and grant funding opportunities, a push for digital, because that will be the way of the future, but, I mean, they're not gonna implement it without any, any grant opportunities. They're not, I, I don't think that they can mandate that it go digital without giving grant opportunities for everybody to buy digital, because it's expensive equipment. Does that answer your question?
It wouldn't be all the, it would be all the agencies in the county.
Yes, yes. Yeah, including fire agencies and, and...
Yeah, there's a lot of radios out there. Yeah.
So it's not in the works any time?
Not that I've heard of.
That's good.
There, there is an initiative from dispatch to assist us in purchasing new mobile data terminals, the computers that are in our cars. That's been going on for about a year. They have some of the computers in stock that they're, that they're issuing out, but we also have the option to take a cash option for that, to buy the equipment that we already have, or, or equipment that's compatible with what we have, so we're, we're looking at that option, but for now, it's, it's still in the, in the waiting period.
Question eighty forty six, vehicle upfitting. So that's when you get a new patrol car and you have to, is that, is that, am I understanding that one right?
It is.
Put the computers and the stripes and all the stuff you need to do to it, is that...
Correct, but we, we have not asked for any money there. That's actually going to be included in the, in the lease purchase.
Okay, that's, that was where I was going with that, was I, I saw the blank there and I was like...
Yeah, that's, that's included in the cost of, of the cars.
Very good.
And it's all rolled up into one, one lease, so that's a, that's a five annual payment lease.
Okay.
At the end of that, we, we own the vehicles. It's, I, I, it's strange how it's worded, but...
Yeah. See, how important is it to have eleven cars? Could you go down a car, save thirty eight thousand dollars, and put that Ford, pay rates as they come, would be thirty five hundred a person?
We can. We've, we have, we have looked, when we bought the cars last time, the, the two new cars, we kept one of them in service as opposed to getting rid of it. So we didn't, we didn't purchase an additional car. I mean, essentially, at this point, with the two-vehicle car rotation anyways, I, I don't see where that, where that helps much. I mean, we're not gonna gain...
Just put more miles on another one and wear a get-out that much quicker, which would have to be replaced sooner, too, when you're not gonna have the resale value of it. I mean, we, we've studied that the last six years.
And that's what we came into. When we, when we came in, there was, there was a few cars and everybody was sharing cars. The car that we kept, again, we, we didn't buy a new car then. So, I mean, essentially, we would propose buying two cars every year, regardless if we have ten or eleven cars, and, and rotate out as they, as they get the oldest cars or the, the most problematic cars.
And what we were trying, sorry, I wanna make this clear, because I know previous boards have gotten away from this, and it's cost us in the long run. The program that's in place, the two per year, has been studied. We studied it when I worked in the Sheriff's Department, and they implemented that as well. This is back in the nineties. It took a while for city of St. Genevieve to get on board with it, after studying several other municipalities on how they purchased their police cars. The chief, actually, I think it was the previous chief that actually started working on it, and you inherited it. But anyway, this has been working for a long time. The goal is, if we stick with the program, which we're in it pretty good now, without any interruptions like we've had the last several years, is every year, when two years come up, you sell those while they are still lower mileage and still worth something. Selling those to, our hopes, are the hopes of the boards that have passed this before, were that with the proceeds that you get from selling the two cars while they're still worth something, they will pay for one of the new ones that we're buying. We haven't got to that point yet to see that benefit. I know one year, we replaced the city administrator's vehicle with one that was retired. We gave one to the fire department, we gave one to the building inspector, to cut down on mileage expense that we were having to pay those departments. So, it would be great to cut down on, on that, but we're gonna start seeing a reduction if we stick with this program. And instead of buying two cars a year, we're real, I mean, even though we're getting two cars a year, it's only gonna end up costing us for one if we stick with this program that we've been preaching for years, that I've been a part of for years, even before I was on the board. And we keep getting away from it and just, our, from it and disrupting it, and we've never gotten to a point where we've seen that benefit. So, am I wrong?
No, that's, that's a hundred percent right.
And you answered, you answered my question, because I was talking, what I was gonna ask about was the disposal of the vehicles, because I knew that they filtered down within the city once the police department, occasionally, one of them will go as a city administrator car or something.
Yeah, and this year...
And that gets factored in, like Joe said, that gets factored into how long this takes to...
The city administrator car will last a long time.
Right.
It's not many miles to put on it.
Eric, if we get into this cycle and we start selling these vehicles, where does that money go?
It would go back into general... Back into general revenue.
Okay, so it won't show up in...
It won't show up as credited in my budget, but, but the hope would be, understanding that that was put back into general, we can, we can budget that and...
Right.
Hopefully, we can draw from it.
We can draw from that, and like, like Aldrin Prince said, buy one and, and then use the, the purchases or the sale of those to, to purchase one. This year, I believe, the truck that, that Jason Crump drives will be going to the, the street department, which obviously, they can use the truck, and it's four-door for when they go on different conferences or whatever, they'll have room to, to bring people. And I believe the fire department has asked for the Crown Vic that, that we would propose getting rid of last year.
When they accept that the brown one blew a better car.
Right.
And I, I think we owe that to get that brown one rotated out of it.
Yeah.
You know, they were not, they didn't pose a fit with accepting that, and we need to get them what they asked for.
And the street department could certainly use some newer trucks, because I know we just got rid of that one Ford, what was it, about thirty years old or something?
Eighty-three.
That wasn't my choice, is it?
You declared it's all right.
Yeah. The old green, it was the old green one, wasn't it?
Still sitting.
Yeah.
But, yeah, with the exception of this year's rotation of vehicles, which have already been repurposed, which is saving us money, because we're not buying another truck for the street department, which certainly needs one. So...
Good point.
The following year is when we're gonna really start seeing the benefit of, of getting two cars gone at a decent mileage and that paying for the next one. So, even though we're buying two, or not we, the police department will be buying two cars per year, the hopes that they're gonna cost us one, you know? And they've gotten away from it from time to time each, and it, it disrupts it, and I, I really think we're biting, or kicking ourselves in the, in the, you know, for doing that. It's cost us more in the long run. We did that with, or, you know, how long did you keep those chargers past their prime, and it cost them way more.
Yeah.
You know, you put an engine into one, and then it was a month later, then the transmission fell out, and then you got a car that you got eight thousand dollars and that's not worth half that.
Right.
Or that was the Impala's. Yeah, I think that was.
Both. We had transmission issues with Impalas, but... Now, I, I mean, I, again, we, we are not, when we implemented the eleventh officer, we didn't, we didn't budget to buy a new car. You know, we, we anticipated being able to roll down a car and, and use it, and again, you know, we, we maintain our cars and, and, you know, it starts getting pricey as, as they get older, but, but they're, they're serviceable, and what we don't want is, is to break down on a, on a call and delay our response, any responding.
And the repairs are so expensive, it, it reaches a point where it's, like I said, you end up way more in it than you're...
Right.
When it's nearing the end of, then you're not gonna get your money out of it, so, you know.
How many miles a year do you put on a vehicle, roughly?
Um, a year, I would say fifteen, twenty a year.
And I wanna make sure, just for the record, that the mileage that we put on these cars is for on-duty only?
Correct.
Okay, so none of your police officers can use this for any personal?
No. The, the police officers that live in town do get a take-home vehicle.
Okay.
But that just means they go on duty from their house. You know, they can, as soon as they're in their car, they're at work. People that live out of town drive in and get their vehicles, they, they stay parked here.
Okay, good, so it's all on duty.
With their own time, their own exception?
Yeah, the K nine, the K nine officer gets a take-home car. He lives out of the city, but, because he has a dog and has to respond with the dog.
Okay, good, thank you. Where's he going?
Bloomsdale, north of Bloomsdale.
I know I've seen him.
Can we move on?
Been quite an asset, hadn't he?
Yes. The K nine is a good dog, and we've got a good handle on him.
Any more questions? Should we move along here?
Anything on the K nine?
K nine?
No, again, that's, that's just a fund for, for donated funds.
Give them some money.
We get, we, we have a line item on here for K nine expenses. We've asked for five thousand dollars, which is a reduction from last year, but we also get, typically, Mississippi Line will donate money every year. He also participates in a, in an agency called Paul Stoppers that, that gives resources and whatnot, and they have a big fundraiser thing every year that we get some donated funds from that. So, so it's, it's, I think it's a worthwhile program, and it's, it's been doing well, so thank you guys for all of your support. Do you have any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Eric.
Yeah, we do. We do some VR stuff with, with them, and then we'll also go up occasionally and, and do K nine searches against them. Yeah.
Good thing. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any... Every year at this time, you get the pleasure of considering whether you wanna reward city employees with some kind of increase. What we've done in the past is the board considered a percentage of overall increase, set a, set a lid on it. And then the department directors would use their discretion on deciding whether or not any individual employee is on basis of merit entitled to, with maximum consideration, or something less than that. I will tell you personally, on three different occasions, as the city administrator, people who reported directly at me did not get the maximum, maximum, because there were factors that caused me to, to, to do that. I think other departments from time to time have also done that. So it isn't automatic that you give any level increase that an employee's gonna get it, but you give the discretion of the department heads to use, to, to consider the, the meritorious nature of the employee and, and reward up to that amount.
So this, whatever figure is picked, if I'm understanding, is, is a maximum?
Right.
And it's up to the department.
If you pick three percent, we would budget three percent for each of the departments, but, but it will, it, it would never be more than that, but it, and likely, it could be less than that.
Sue, what is the cost of living this year?
She just said you know, I didn't look that up.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we don't know. It's, it's under three percent. To, other cities that I have been monitoring have been doing a variety of things, but it's kind of maxing out at three percent. Some did a percent and a half cost of living, and then another percent and a half merit, so everybody got the percent and a half, and, you know, it's just, there's all sorts of permutations of that. Some cities, bigger cities, have step programs, unified personnel programs, where everybody's in these, these steps, and the increases are prescribed by the, by the program. My experience with that is, is it's great as long as you've got the money to fund it, but it, it often happens is the cities say, well, you know, it'd be great if we could follow this program now, but we can't, because we don't have enough money. And once you get off track, it's no good.
Right.
You gotta start it over again.
I wonder the difference between the cost of living and the consumer price index? Because that's been used before, hasn't it?
Yeah.
Cost of living rises.
I mean, I can tell you the difference, but the computer price index is, is a arbitrary market basket of goods and services that the federal government picks every year and monitors the cost of those things and determines, because these are things consumers are buying, what the, the price index should be. Cost of, but it may or may not take, in fact, general inflation. It doesn't generally include things like insurance and, you know, but, so, cost of living is more of an inflation issue. CPI is a different indicator that will reflect inflation, but also reflects whatever choices they made in doing it. As an example, for years, it didn't have any computer-related services in it, and then they finally said, oh, well, maybe we oughta start putting some of those in. Yeah, but they took out buggy whips.
Yeah.
So, you know, you wanna file this away for what it's worth, I just looked it up on Google.
Okay.
Must be right.
Right.
Right?
According to the president.
According to this, annual cost of living is two percent projected or something for 2018. That's, that keeps coming up in different things, so what's, what's the EPI?
So my, my question is, is this merit increase, would it be in addition to a COLA if we allowed that as well?
No.
So that would be part of the COLA?
Yes.
Okay, so we could give a blanket COLA?
You could do, as I said, another, some have said, percent and a half COLA.
Right.
Or two percent, maybe. And another percent and a half or another percent merit.
Okay.
And then it would be up to, then it would, it would be up to the department head's discretion as to whether or not to give that second amendment, or some portion of it.
But the cost of living doesn't normally take effect until January the first. That's when you get social security increases?
When the federal government adjusts their payments, yeah.
Right. So that, that figure of any is, will change January the first?
Right.
Yeah.
Right. I was just trying to get a, a general feel for what it was, because I didn't know.
I didn't know either. What's the board's decision here?
What did we do last year?
Three percent?
We did three.
Yes.
Do we do it different for different departments?
Police department, I believe, got six.
Oh, you gave police department, yeah, I'm sorry.
About to six. Now, what we pay individual employees, is that public knowledge?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, because, well, I mean, Aldrin Donovan obviously could not be here tonight. In a lengthy conversation with him, he expressed concerns that, you know, just voting a blanket raise, you know, whether it be for a particular department or a particular, across all the departments, he didn't, that didn't sit well with him, and mainly because in years past, different people's salaries have been set without the board's knowledge even, and that the board doesn't have any input on certain employees when they're hired in and what their salaries are when they're hired in.
Well, that.
Well, and, you know, and he, he just expressed interest that he couldn't support just a blanket raise across the board without knowing more about the process of how those salaries are set to begin with, and he would like, he, if he were here, he said he was going to, you know, request more information on the individual departments and individual salaries and have more board input into each of those decisions rather than.
You could do that, but you'd have to change the ordinance that guards against individual aldermen getting involved in making operational and personnel decisions.
Okay.
You approve a budget, and I, as the city administrator, administer that budget with my department heads.
Gotcha.
This board could change that, but you'd have to change the, the, the language that was adopted in order to prevent that.
Okay. I was just relaying his concerns. They're not necessarily mine. I mean, I, I understand where he's coming from, and I see it, but, you know.
And I understand the need to guard against micromanaging by the board of aldermen.
That's the way we've done it along the back through.
I make a motion, we do two, three percent.
Up to three percent.
Up to three percent.
Oh, in favor? Don't have to, we're going to put that in there?
Well, yeah, we're not really, we're not in session.
Right. Is that, is that the, the general consensus of the board, to set that rate like we did last year at three percent and leave, like Martin said, up to our, trust it with the department heads of who gets what?
We had, and I, I mean, the only problem I have with that is, you know, last year we told the police department, hey, look, we're going to do this, and we're going to work towards getting you closer, even with our closest competitor, which is the county, which starts their officers out, their non-commissioned officers out at three dollars more an hour than what we're paying our certified commissioned officers. Last year, we asked if six percent would be enough, and we could work towards finding a solution to getting them closer to that amount. You know, I'm afraid if we don't do something there, we're going to start losing people right in that. We already have a revolving door back there. I'm not comfortable with only giving the police department three percent when they are, I mean, with all the propies that have been approved surrounding us everywhere, we, we have to do something where they're.
Well, I was under the understanding that, that we were going to address that with Eric, he was gonna, that's in the process of, of doing something like that, Joe. Or is that not what I heard? We're, we're going to make a decision, the board's going to make a decision? How we're going to fund, make that happen? And I don't think we're going to make it happen.
So that doesn't need to be done prior to setting the budget?
No, I, I don't think not at all. That's going to be above and beyond. That's, we're going to talk about that. That's still on the agenda.
If that occurred, if there's some concurrently unavailable source of funding, we would do a budget amendment to adopt it.
So we can do that with a budget amendment?
Oh, absolutely.
Answer your question?
Okay.
Okay.
For each.
Is there any other, any other, about the, that's our final budget, is there any, any other discussion relating to the 2019 budget?
There's no other discussion you got, Dr. Smith? You want to share anything?
Yeah.
Mr. Mooney?
Nope.
With any other questions and clarifications we had on some of the numbers, how accurate are these that were given to us now? The, the budgets, I know a couple of the department heads, when we talked to them, they said, oh, well, this, this isn't right, it's actually lower and blah, blah, blah. What, what's our final numbers going to look like? How close to this is it?
It'll be, I mean, really close, other than, the only thing we're changing is the sixteen thousand bar.
Fifteen-five for the?
Or the fifteen-five for the cable board, and then we'll have to adjust the three percent on everybody's salaries.
And wasn't the fire department going to get back to us on possibly raising their fees?
The tags, the fire tags, if they're not hurting.
That's got to be done by ordinance.
That's got to be done.
So that has nothing to do with it?
I mean, it would.
I thought there was a couple others.
Pardon?
I thought there was a couple others that.
On the best. Eric added those best.
Right, but that was.
But you're saying that the projected expenditures might be less than what's reflected in that budget, is that?
Well, kind of, I mean, I know.
So there might be more money left at the end of the year than?
My memory's not that great. I can only remember the most recent one, and I believe maybe it was the one before that, but, you know, Sandra had found some stuff in hers that was actually, her numbers were actually lower than what this.
Yeah, I think those have all been adjusted out.
I thought somebody else came up with something, and I was just wondering.
You had that, the, the website management fee that was in there?
Well, I mean, I.
Got, that we now have taken out?
I just know that she found some stuff, and I thought a couple others found some stuff too, and I was just wondering what that had of.
I thought you meant, like, chucked something in correctly, Al, huh?
I did. They don't have that.
No. Oh, okay, well, it's not reflected in yours yet. It'll be in the final budget before you approve it.
There's truth to it. I don't think they can pay it. Randy? Just, just ask a que, or, I already asked Martin this question before we met, and it pertains to this indirectly. There was a thing in the Herald this week, right inside the front page at the top, said Capitol Report, and if you read it, I find it confusing the way it's worded, and I just want for public clarification, Martin, if you would explain it, because it makes it sound like that between us and Iron County, that somehow we're getting two-point-eight million dollars for tourism, and we are not.
We are not getting two-point-eight million.
But the way this is worded, if you don't read it carefully, it makes it sound like that. So.
Yeah, when he asked me about it, I interpreted that as there's two-point-eight something available statewide.
Statewide.
And only Iron and St. Jen locally.
We're the only two entities, yeah, that, yeah, right, correct.
Right, okay.
And it's, and it's the grant that Sandra has presented to you as part of our budget.
Yeah.
That was included in my budget report.
Right. Well, we thought so. It's just, when you read that, it's like, really?
We're getting a portion of that.
Don't say anything about a grant.
It's anywhere near all of it.
Yeah.
Don't say anything about a grant.
We're getting like fifteen million.
Does anybody else think that it might be a little fiscally reckless to go at three percent across the board?
Well.
That if we're, we're, we're talking back and forth constantly about finding money to do projects that need to get done?
Well, I had some reservations about it too, however, and this is just my opinion, when you put it that you're going to do it so much a percent and so much on merit, and that's the max, it doesn't mean everybody's going to get it. I don't know. That, that cushions it a little for me, but.
How, how often does it come in less than the max, do you figure, for people?
Well, let me say, how often? It, it is a ra, it's, it's relatively rare for someone to give an employee something less than what has been authorized.
Okay.
But.
I don't think, I, the way you.
I take my responsibility seriously, and I don't reward bad behavior, so.
And I, and I don't like the term, you know, reckless, and I, I mean, and I know you was no, but just, I, I understand what you're saying is, is everything that's going on, can we really afford to increase the salaries of our employees? And I said, and that, to me, that's, that's just, that's more important to me than making sure even and on the record that there's, there's something on a street or something like that. I, I understand that. I understand all the problems we have in the city, but I, I think you have to, you have to take care of your, your employees.
I'm not suggesting no increase at all.
No, I understand that. I understand that. And I think you have to look at too, is that increase to three percent, if, if you have a, a higher dollar employee like, like Martin, compared to one of our, our workers or even a patrolman, you know, or anybody else, so, you know, I.
I personally am not going to quit working regardless of what you do.
Yeah.
But.
Well, good.
I'm just saying, I guess it's.
I'm not in the same position in life that some other employee.
I think you got to look at, and, and every department head has to look at, who, who's justified, and, and, yeah, I really like this person, and he's a good worker, and he deserves three percent, you know?
Where is the board looking back and forth and looking at numbers and scratching their heads, trying to find extra dollars to send towards projects that are important to, that we've decided as a board are important to us? And there's no progress made towards that, and I don't see, I'm not, I don't have a solution. I'm not saying, there's not places you can, there's not a lot of places you can slice. I think the only place that you could possibly come up with money is somehow find a better insurance deal.
That's, that would, that would be one way you could find more money.
Martin's working on that, right?
Working on it, yeah.
I just don't, because I, I look at, I look at everybody's budget and all the, the heads of departments that present their budgets, and there's, there's just not fat to trim.
There's not, never has been.
And, and it's, it's frustrating to read, it's been a while now, but to read stuff in the paper from people writing stories in saying that we're spending irresponsibly and overspending and not, and not funding the things that need to be funded, when you look at the budget and we're not, we're not providing inessential things, and I just, I, I'd like to find money to, to put towards more street repairs and do all that stuff.
And many, many people don't understand kind of the, kind of the pigeonhole nature of our budget. You know, money that's raised over here can't be spent over here.
Right.
And, and, you know, they don't see that.
Well, I think you got to, John, I think you got to look back, and, and let's look back at the, the last couple of years, you know, and, and look at the, the progress that has been made. I, I, I mean, you look, and, and that's all I can go on, is that there's, there's new asphalt on streets, and it's all over the town. It's just not down in the downtown. It's out in, hopefully after Park's done, it's in everybody's district, you know? We've approved this board, and since I've been mayor, we approved a capital expense, expenditure for a brand-new fire truck, you know? Maybe everybody wasn't on board with that, but it's, it's, it's going to improve and provide protection for this city, you know? What we do with the police department, you know, are we where we need to be? No, we're not, and it's not, it's just that we're going to have to try to get there, and I don't have the answer either, but I think, I think you have to look at it and look at the whole, the big picture of this thing, and I think we're a whole lot better off than we were two years ago. Would that be, and I talked to, I talked to a lot of people on the street.
And I would like to add to what you're saying, and that I find when I talk to people and just general perceptions, there are a lot of people who feel that somehow the difficulties we have are unique to us. Well, you know, like somehow there's something wrong with us. Go to any city, anywhere, they can't fix all their potholes.
No.
They can't replace all their vehicles.
No.
Everybody, every city struggles with the same thing. Some of them are more blessed or fortunate to have bigger tax bases, maybe they've got, you know, like Farmington.
Like Maryland Heights, they had a big golf tournament, they don't have to raise taxes.
Look at, look at the money that they don't, we don't have that.
We don't have that.
But for what we have.
I, yeah.
You know, we're making it work, so.
And I want to go on the record to say as well, to back Mr. Mooney, or Aldrin Mooney up on this, I am all for the three percent, and anyone that knows me knows that. I think they work hard, they deserve it. I just don't want to go into a meeting a week or two from now and take from one department and move things or, and reallocate. I think what we're trying to say here is, what's been presented to the board is sound, and if we're going to approve a three percent increase across the board, that we shouldn't be trying to winnow it down here and there. That's my concern. I don't want to go into a meeting with you all two weeks from now and have you say you want to take something from here and something from here and something from here. I think, I think we have a very good budget from the, from the people who are in charge, and if we authorize the three percent, that we should be satisfied with where we are, pretty much where we are.
In regards to wages?
With regard to not taking money from other departments.
Well, I think we've studied, last year, we, we never had the work session.
Again, I'm not going to be comfortable walking out of this meeting saying, yes, I think we should get three percent across the board if we're going to take from another department in the future, this year. That's just what I'm saying. So that's where I am.
Well, this is the last discussion before you're going to be presented with a, with a budget to vote on.
Do you, anybody at this table think they're going to need to take from any other department? Speak now, or forever, forever hold thy peace, because I want to know.
At least for another year.
I want to know. I'm going to take silence as we are pretty darn satisfied with where we are.
Well, we, we discussed the budget at, at Langston, we broke, we broke everything down, we've had, it's our third meeting about budget. We didn't do that last year. We come in, we're kind of blind to it. We had, everybody had opportunity to come into the meeting and, and voice opinions. Everybody did. Reason we did it publicly, everybody in the community has to hear what we have to say, which I like that. I've gotten some comments from people, but it's, it's not a lot of people, you know, so I think, and maybe, maybe this week I'll get a lot more, but I'm not afraid to talk to people and, and answer questions, and they got questions, or everybody's invited to come to this meeting. We've, everybody knows we've had budget meetings here, so I think, I think this year, I'm very comfortable and satisfied with the progress we made and what we've done here.
We talk about slicing the pie differently, and I, at this budget, I look at it, and I just, I don't see a way to slice it differently.
Nor do I.
Unless, unless there's a way, like I said, to come up with savings in, like an insurance.
I, I still stand on saying that your, your two years, this, this budget is going to be, you're going to have more money to spend here in two years. Things are happening to this community for the first time in a long time. You have a National Park Service that's going to be established in this community. You have a beautiful learning center and museum that's going to be established in this community. Both of those are going to bring more visitors to this town. You have a water park that's coming in out there, it's going to bring people into town. When people come to town, they're going to spend money. When they spend money, the tax base is going to go up, and, and we're going to have more money to do more things, and this town is, we're going to, for the, we're going to grow, and I'm telling you right now, you, you're not going to, we're not going to have problems meeting this budget. Sue, here, we're, we're, we're not in a negative, and, and coming up in another year, we're better now than we've ever been, you know, and we're going to continue to get better. If we do our job and, and do what you did here, and let's be smart about it, let's look at the big picture. It's, it's, it's not just this department or this department, we all have to work together, and it takes all of us to make things. It takes, it just, that's what it's going to take. And it's going to take a board that's willing to work, and, and you all have proven that to me, so I'm very pleased, and I'm pleased with the budget, and I'm looking forward to approving it and, and having a great year, another year in 2019. Any other questions? Then we'll close the meeting.
Got it.
Thank you.